I'd like to welcome you to the second regular meeting of the North Spencer County School Corporation for September 2025. Superintendent Schneiders has ordered a call to today, providing each of the board members a packet of information in reference to the items on tonight's agenda. This packet is for review and to have questions or concerns addressed. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order with the moment of silence. Our vision is to provide inviting and challenging learning opportunities to everyone. And tonight we have Jennifer Mayo from Spencer County Purdue Extension who will present on the Summer Community Adventures Program.
Hey, I think I've met almost everybody. I'm Jennifer Mayo. I'm the 4-H educator here at Spencer County. And so we've had a really amazing partnership with the school corporation for a really long time. So Summer Community Adventures is one of those programs that we've done. The 4-H has been involved in our main extension office, I think probably for the last four years. A little bit of history behind it is for, I think this was its 16th summer. Tom and Tommy think started about 16 summers ago. And as they kind of got into retirement, wanted somebody to take it over. And so 4-H was kind of the perfect fit for that. We all looked around and looked crazy in the summer, so we decided to take on one more thing, and it has been the perfect fit. We started out, I think probably four summers ago, with around 40 youth. And this summer, Ms. Wetzel said, "How many can we take?" And we're like, "Well, I don't know. I mean, how many of the bus could fit for a field trip?" Okay, so we need to take a small bus, like we could take a small bus. Sure, why not? As long as, like, we have, with Purdue, we have ratios and things like that that we have to meet. So as long as we're within that, like, whatever we need to do is fine. So we had 59 total that were enrolled in the program. And this is the first summer that we have seen consistent numbers with these attending all seven weeks. Normally, June, we have really good attendance, and then in July, it kind of starts to drop off. Where this summer, we really saw June and July really consistent attendance. And we also saw, for the first time ever, a really big group of Summer Adventures youth came to the 4-H fair, which we had never had before. We really tried to build those relationships, not just with the youth, but with the families, and kind of build that trust. And this is the first summer that we have ever seen that, where they've come to the 4-H fair. They particularly, we had a rocket launch on Saturday morning. So one of the girls that I would have said, "Hey, there's some Summer Adventures kids." We're like, "What?" So we all went running after the rocket launch. And we had probably 10 kids that were there. And the bottom picture down there is one of the little girls that she actually ended up winning the rocket launchers. We're not in state closest to the little marker that we have. So she got a great achievement ribbon. And so aerospace was one of the projects that we did during Summer Adventures this year. So I guess it kind of make, we pre-made a lot of it. There's a lot of moving pieces that we've ever made, a rocket or the aerospace project in 4-H. There's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of glue. And so we pre-made a lot of that. The kids got to spray paint them, they got to use acrylic markers and make them their own, and got to shoot them off. So I think these are really, really good. I would say this is fulfilling for us on our side because we get to build those relationships. And then watch them as they grow, and we're starting to ask the kids, once they age out, since it's very modern middle school, kind of come back and be counselors. So it's cool this year to see some of those older boys that need to put more in leadership roles. They come back and have them with the kindergartners and watch them really partner together. And how they take that well seriously, how they can help the younger kindergartners and boot them along in groups, make sure they're taken care of and are safe, and really give them that responsibility. Another really key piece that we have, if you look at Food and Security, we have a partnership. Where bags of blessings still provides for the summer, the bags of blessings, that they provide during the school year. But then through fun raising, we also are able to provide fresh produce for the families. And so it's really, really neat that we've done it a couple different ways. And how we did it in the summer, and how we probably continue to do it. That we had it set up in that picture next to it. You can see we had it set up kind of like a farmer's market, where it was just a big long table, and all the produce that was light produce was together. And so we told the kids, you know, you can, this is how much we have, this is how much you can take. And so one of the little boys was like, "I want to make one of those." And I'm like, "Why don't you get more to make those?" And she said, "Get more." It's like, whatever you want, what? Just take them all, and then we see when we had squash. Oh, I don't know about that, but they didn't know what to do. They had no clue, so then to find recipes that were culturally appropriate, that someone could translate. So they didn't know what to do with it and want to take it home. So it was neat to see them want to pick it and want to choose what they were getting. And then to totally fill their bags with it and watch, I mean, little kids try and load, load themselves onto the bus. Was really neat. In the summer, we also had, I think, 49 youths. Forty-two that took the bus two or three years ago. Oh, North Spencer generously allowed us to use the school corporation for transportation. So we pay for it, but you allow us to use the school bus to transport the kids. And it's been a game changer. We had 42 of the 59 that used that this summer, and that's the highest it's ever been. And I think that also is probably why our number looks so consistent. Because it's the same way and reliable way for them to get to and from the program. So we just really appreciate everything you all do, the support that you give for us to be able to continue the program. If you're ever around in the summer and want to come see it on Thursday, it's an amazing program. With a really, really amazing program. I also really check to brag on the David Turgeon staff and the Christie staff. We have teachers from both schools that come and volunteer in the summer. So you'll have, okay, from Wetzel's there all summer. Kelsey will be there. Have Jill Lacher from Christie to volunteer this all summer with her kids that come. And they just love to be there. You have teachers who do determine that they'll hop in and out all summer. And they're just doing, just going to make sure the kids are okay and see how they're doing and check in on them. And I really think that's what makes our school corporation special, that they get to know the kids and they want to make sure that they're not just doing okay, but that they're thriving. And I think that's what sets us apart.
This is generally meet at Christie? Sorry, I said you generally meet at Christie. Is that your meeting place?
David, what do you mean if David?
David, generally.
This is open to anyone in the school corporation or anyone in the county.
So it's just for David Turgeon? And the way these are selected for it, Ms. Wetzel has a really good goal on who has been in the program. And so we just kind of, we've been triggered to decide who is in the program. So we have four. And generally, the way it works is that if you've been in the program before, we send permission forms out to those. And then we probably have, I don't know, depending on how many we take, 15 or 20 spots that are open after that. And then she really knows who needs to be in the program. And if we get close to the capacity, she'll say, "I really, really, this is going to be important." Okay, sounds good. Let's get them in. So we really haven't ever turned anybody down.
Jennifer, when you mentioned Christie, you meant that from the, through the Summer Feeding Program, correct?
So Jill Lacher teaches at Christie, and she and her kids come to Summer Adventures. And I'm like, "You're awesome." So it's not just a daily turn on kids and staff. I mean, it's really a beautiful corporation full of amazing teachers. But I mean, Jill, that's nothing to do, just that nothing to do for her. But still, I value the program. She's a 4-H volunteer, so I think that's probably how she got involved. Really loves the program. And there was a, an incident in summer earlier. I had to call Kelsey before Summer Adventures started. There was a little girl walking down the road, so I called her. Hey, I think this is one of your students. I don't know what to do. And she was getting ready to go on vacation, was at the airport. And went into like a corner of the airport to talk so that we could figure out. It was what we came to do to keep the child safe and get her where she needed to be. And not everyone would do that. She is an amazing principal and really, really cares about those kids. It's not everyone would in the summer at 10:30 when they're getting ready to go on vacation in the airport and answer a 4-H educator's call. Not many people do that. So she is, I know that you guys hear of a lot, you guys make sure that that is a lot. So on here, I want to share the good stories because there are a lot of really, really good stories. And a lot of really good employees that really care about the kids. And I think this is a program that already highlights that. Because the people that, the staff that come, they're paid to be there. They just show up because they want to make sure that the kids are okay, that they're getting what they need through the summer. And maybe give them a hard time a little bit while they're there. But I think that's what keeps them coming back.
Does the bus pick them up at their house or is there pickup spots that they go to?
It depends. Some of them get picked up typically at their houses. But in, like specifically in Gentryville, some of the wires are too little, so they can't go all the way up to their houses. So they don't pop into the street. So that's one of the things we try to have to figure out with, like the produce bags. And their bags of blessings are so heavy. So with these little kindergarten and first graders, trying to load these bags up the hill. We try to have to figure that out this year.
Like, thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thanks for helping me out.
Thank you for helping me out.
Thanks.
Next item, a roll call. David Wanniger, he is active this evening. Wayne Richmond?
Present.
Jennifer Rich?
Present.
Chris Lor?
Present.
Jennifer Aldridge?
Present.
Kristen Giles?
Present.
And because David Wanniger is not in the city, we need to appoint someone as an acting secretary. So it would just be for this evening, and there's several things that someone needs to attest to. If someone...
I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Aldridge as acting secretary.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Next item is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes. I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is consideration of treasures report.
For treasures report, the only thing we have this meeting is state profile. Just to kind of highlight some of our balances. Questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I recommend you approve the treasures report as...
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is consideration of claims.
Claims for this meeting, claim number 107932 through 108035, for like $571,347.22. We do have a couple claims to abstain, Mr. Wanniger, 107988, and Mrs. Giles, 108029. Otherwise, any questions on any other of the claim items? Since he's at the Christie Playground, I guess he's still, we'll still receive his, his... Yep, they just finished the answerings today. Not sure they got on it today, but it was open today, I think it's next week. I'll make a motion to approve the claims listed.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is personnel consideration. Leave.
Under leaves, we do have a staff number who's requested leave. I'm giving you that information there. If there's any questions we have, give them to them. Otherwise, I recommend you accept or we approve the leave as requested.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is resignation.
We have two resignations for you to consider. At the high school, we have cafeteria assistant Terry Curtis submitting her resignation. And under North Spencer School Corporation, like a bus driver, Mr. David Wanniger, who submitted his resignation. Recommend you accept these resignations as submitted. I'll make a motion to...
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is appointments.
Under appointments, we have three to consider. We have a daily turn on crew school assistant, two to three afternoons per week at the DCC. Mrs. Henderson recommends that Abby Wessel be assigned to that position. At the middle school, if you recall, we had a resignation, kind of unexpected resignation at last meeting. Mr. Andrew Reivers, who was sending Mrs. DeBilles to find a replacement, Anderson Stiff. And at the high school, we've been looking for a custodian. Mr. Walpersen recommends that Pamela Quick be assigned to that position.
I'll go to her.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. You have others? We have others.
We have one recommendation to consider to cover a leave that has already been approved. Information's been presented to you, recommend you approve it as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Patron comments? Patron comments? We'll go to open this, to projects update.
Included in your board packet is a four-page document that just highlights some of the still ongoing projects. Nothing really major, we're wrapping up, obviously. So mostly, what we're looking at here, just a few punch lists. The Christie Playground, things are good there. There are a few little issues. There's a piece on the playground equipment at the Christie Playground that actually, I don't know what the scientific term is, but it refracts light and it kind of focuses it and shoots it down into the turf. And there's actually a spot that it has kind of burned because of that. So Play Pros has been really good about that, and they have a no-cost solution. North Spencer switched that and remedied the issue. Siding and seating is kind of the next big issue of these playgrounds. So obviously, playgrounds are wrapping up, but the siding and seating that is scheduled to start next week. Christie, actually all three of the playgrounds at the elementary school are scheduled through siding and seating on the 29th. And the answerings playground was supposed to open today, we did not hear if they actually go on it today. They're not, doubt they did, but hopefully tomorrow is, let's them get on. Lincoln Trail, that is due to open next Monday. The North Spencer House in Christina Wintory, that is on track. The demolition is supposed to happen very soon, so this week, contractor is supposed to coordinate that actual demolition. They've been in contact with us about some trees, actually, that not part of the bid, but I think what they're doing very close to school, if you remember, there's con trees very close to Christie. So we're going to invite somebody to take care of that. No School Roof, that timeline has just been shared by Angela, nothing new on that. It's just a reminder of the timeline. And Tom and I, Mr. Walter 79, next week have a meeting scheduled, two weeks from now, have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Burton, Mr. Kudor, kind of start talking about master planning, talking about what we're going to consider for next summer and beyond. You'll see some of those notes there. At a minimum, this northeast corner here, these rooms, we will very likely do that just because that's kind of continues our progression. About that hallway, Special Ed, we're on this east wing right here. I consider that. Any part can let him prove it's science department, some of the other things we talked about, we'll consider as well. So the leave, that is all my projects update. Questions on that? Exciting to have those playgrounds done, because I read it out.
Okay, next item, a new business. An option for 2026 bus replacement plan resolution.
So really, letters A through G under good business are all budget adoption items, okay? So what I'm going to do, basically, you know, all of this information has been shared. There's been opportunity for public input. Board has had opportunity for their input. So today's, tonight's the night where we basically say, okay, we're going to approve these items. And then what I'll do from there, I have to go into Gateway, which is the DLGF software we use, program we use. And I will have to update all of these and finalize these. And that, with the process going at the state level. So what we're doing here is basically, we're saying gate or day to some of the things we've talked about through this process, okay? So first item is the 2026 bus replacement plan resolution that's been shared. If there's any questions, we have to answer them. Otherwise, I would recommend you approve Bus Replacement, the 2026 Bus Replacement Plan Resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Bus Replacement Plan.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Exactly the same with the 2026 Capital Projects Fund Plan and Resolution. I recommend you approve the Capital Projects Fund as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve. I have a second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next item is, it's formed straight out of Gateway. It's the resolution of appropriations and tax rates for the 2026 budget. That details, that doesn't mean that's what our budget will be, that just means that's what we are submitting. Tax rate is included on that. Again, we have time to adjust that, as I've told you before. Recommend you approve the resolution of appropriations and tax rates for the 2026 budget. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is basically just giving, it's a resolution we're signing that allows us to transfer funds. This is not education operations, that's coming here, but just transfers that we need to do as needed. Recommend you approve the 26 budget transfer resolution.
I'll move. I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next one is the transfer, the resolution to transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund. Recommend you approve that resolution. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Secondly, adoption of the 2026 Resolution for expenditures for the 26 fiscal year. Just a resolution, which you're approving expenditures for, but next question here. Would you approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The last one actually goes back, we need to do it for the 26 budget, but it actually goes back to Northern North Spencer Middle School Building Corporation form. This is essentially just giving permission for us to acquire a property tax levy for the 26 budget, for that middle school building corporation. Recommend you approve that, at least rental equity.
I'll go to her.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, and next item on the agenda is request.
We have a lot of field trips, and we have to answer any questions on any of them. Otherwise, I recommend you approve the field trip requests.
I'll make a motion to approve field trips. I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is professional leave.
We have two leave requests. Mr. Randy Fisher requests approval to attend the ABCA Baseball Division in Columbus, Ohio, January 8th and 9th of 2026. And also Carol Matthews and Ross Gentry request approval to attend the UJ Educational Computer Coordinators Conference in Indianapolis on the November 5th through 7th. Would you approve those requests?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is facilities request.
Facilities request, I'm not going to talk through each one individually. We have answered questions on many of them, but I recommend you approve these requests.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is superintendent's report.
So last week, parent teacher conference conferences started at the elementary schools, and those continue again this week on Wednesday, September 24th. Middle High School has their conferences from 3:30 to 7:00. And then on Thursday, September 25th, all of North Spencer Elementary Schools have their second round of conferences at the same time, 3:30 to 7:00. Also, I want to remind everyone that the Parentos High School Parent Connection meetings will be held on September 25th. So again, this is a strange time to get this going. Meeting is at 6:00 PM on September 25th, it's in the high school library, talking about topics that are impacting teens. I'd like to just briefly talk about this a little bit. So iReady is, I guess, a software we've used. Does beginning, near, middle, and year-to-year testing gives us good data. iReady has always been so impressed with how we've used data. They actually invited North Spencer teachers to participate in this iReady summit. They're paying for all costs. And they're actually going to be a leading breakout session at that summit. It's beginning of October, and I can't remember the date right now, but I just thought it was pretty neat that they reached out and asked us to do that. This was on your table here, so this is, if you recall, Spencer County Historical Society, they planned a field trip, where they were going to have all the creators go to different spots in Spencer County. So this is the same group. They put this together, and they dropped them off here at the central office. But Lincoln Historic Sites Tour just has a lot of information about Spencer County and the course they're covering. So they wanted to make sure every board member that, I thought that was pretty neat. Kathy tried to dig all day, and because of the rain, they were pushed back, the field trip that was supposed to happen on Wednesday. So it's going to be next, Wednesday, October 1st. I want to thank the board members who attended the fall conference. I thought it was a great time, the sessions were good. The East Miss, I think the album is excellent, appreciate that, and thank you guys very much for going. And lastly, Angel Burton's been hard at work recently. So she was able, with all the new HVAC and new equipment at the middle school, she was able to give us essentially an incentive check from CenterPointe, $47,702. So just some basic information from CenterPointe. So we had estimated cost savings of about $40,000 per year. Payback, the payback including the incentive is low under $2. So I thought that was pretty neat. I'm pretty neat that CenterPointe has that program too, so. Angel had also shared, so last year about this time, there was a rebate check for almost $19,000. That was the high school and CTE, some of the renovations. So just thought I would share that with the board. That was the high school and CTD, some of the renovations. So just thought I would share that with the board.
Jennifer, if you want to be real fans, we need to appoint a secretary, but acting.
All the business has been conducted. So I, I'm requesting an adjournment and going to the therapy session. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are now adjourned.
Shall I end the stream?